All right, it's 3:30, so we'll get started. My name is Brett Ryan, I'm the Fire Chief here at Springfield Township, and thank you all for coming tonight. Today, when we start, we want to go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good afternoon. It's my honor today to welcome two new members of Springfield Township Fire Department family. We're not only excited for what they bring individually, but how they strengthen our team as a whole. First, Jacob Langonek. Jacob comes from a long line of firefighters. His dad, a very good and close friend of mine, is the current Deputy Chief of Coventry Fire. And his grandfather, retired Assistant Chief from Green. Jacob looks and acts so much like his dad, when he walks by, I have to take a double take every time. But make no mistake, Jacob is carving his own path. He's finishing paramedic school this month, and his attitude, drive, and excitement to learn make him a perfect addition to our department. Next, Keith Broto. Keith comes to us as a paramedic, and is his first-time full-time fire position as well. He comes highly recommended from a good friend of mine, retired District Chief Joe Shoemaker. Joe being Joe, when asked for a recommendation, it went something like this: "Don't hire him because of me, and he dates my daughter and hasn't pissed me off." I knew if Joe thought he was a good fit, then he would be great for us. Keith is currently attending Akron University's Fire Academy, sponsored by us, and we're thrilled to have him join us. We look forward to watching you grow with us in many successful years together. As a chief, my job is easy when I'm surrounded by outstanding individuals. I'm fortunate, every day, the Springfield Fire has members who make the tough work seamless. Jacob and Keith fit the mold we always look for, 20-year-old bodies with a 40-year-old mentality. With a team like this behind me, leading isn't work, it's an honor. Welcome you both, we're excited to have you here, and we can't wait to see the contribution you will make into the future. Guys, want to come on up? Who's doing your pinning? Okay, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jacob Langonek.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter-medic full-time
And will faithfully discharge the duties of a firefighter-medic, full-time.
For Springfield Township
For Springfield Township.
Summit County
Summit County.
State of Ohio
State of Ohio.
During my continuance of employment.
During my continuance of employment.
Congratulations. Do yours first?
Sure.
All right, that's pretty much it, thank you all for coming. We do have refreshments cake in the conference room, so please stick around, talk a little, and have some cake. Thank you. Thanks.
That was kind of a run-on.
Let's get started here, we got a near sell-out. This is a regular meeting in Springfield Township Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Price, we call the roll, please.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. DeLauro.
Here.
Mr. Cottle.
Here.
Mr. Spickard.
Here.
All right, before we get started with these motions, that I know is the reason why you're all here. Chief Simone, you have a little presentation you'd like to give us beforehand?
Yes, sir, Mr. DeLauro, I do. My name is Jack Simone, I'm the Police Chief here in Springfield Township. We have an opportunity tonight, this evening, to recognize extraordinary lifesaving actions by two officers that are here. But before I start, I want to recognize the Board of Trustees that are here. So our Board of Trustees is Mr. Cottle, Mr. DeLauro, and Mrs. Chapman. Our Fiscal Officer, right next to me, is Mr. Michael Spickard. Next to them, we have our Administrative Assistant, Patty Price and Leanne Jasko. Next to them, Ted Weinheimer is our basic Administrative Assistant to the Board of Trustees, Township Administrator. Deb Groves, our Zoning Administrator, and Chief Ryan Bolt, the Fire Chief here in Springfield Township. Like I said, we have a great opportunity to recognize a couple officers that just did an amazing job, a lifesaving, they're getting a lifesaving award this evening. A lot of what the national media wants to share with us, all the negative things that officers do, and don't get me wrong, officers make mistakes across the country. You know, we all get labeled the same when somebody makes something, does something wrong, or makes a bad choice, but this is a great opportunity for us, because so many officers around the country, it's not getting recognized, it's not getting national attention, it's not even getting local attention, sometimes when they really go above and beyond their job. It's a difficult job for these officers, they're out in the field every day, they're dealing with the worst that society has to offer, right? And they treat everybody with respect, to the best that they can, they enforce the law, they protect our citizens. They're the actual they're the actual first responders on scene for every incident. They're the first guys, whether it's dealing with somebody with a medical issue, before our paramedics can get on scene, whether it's a burglary, whether it's a crime in process, these guys are the first on scene, so that we get an opportunity to recognize extraordinary efforts by two officers, I'm really looking forward, looking forward to this tonight. As far as law enforcement goes, people often don't realize everything that they do. I mean, they see lights and sirens, or they see major investigations, but they're engaging with the public every day. There's over 900,000 interactions with law enforcement every day across the country. These guys are there to take care of our residents, to take care of our citizens, and take care of our visitors. The incident that we're here tonight to share with you was on July 25th. There was a customer at Walmart that stopped breathing and collapsed near the checkout center, checkout counter. As soon as he collapsed, John Minnick was a customer in the store. He responded to the gentleman on the floor. At this point, he was not breathing, he had no pulse. Officer Mullinex, who's a Barbanton Police Officer, was working a security detail at Walmart. Walmart hires our police officers to provide security seven days a week. Often, we're not able to fill those shifts, so we reach out to other agencies. Officer Mullinex works there quite often, so he's an officer from Barbanton, but he works that extra job at Walmart, here in Springfield Township. He immediately responded, right? Officer Mullinex also quickly notified our dispatch center that there was a gentleman that had fallen at Walmart, wasn't breathing, no pulse. Officer Keys was in the area, so he also immediately responded. These three individuals, and I watched the body worn camera of Officer Keys, all worked together to conduct CPR on this individual. They did a great job, it was a team effort, they all took turns until an AED arrived on scene. They put the AED on the gentleman to help him get his heartbeat back. They just did a great job, they all worked together, they were professional, they were calm, they were organized. You would have thought the three of them had worked as a team before, because they all just did a great job together. They were able to continue CPR until the firefighters were able to greet able to arrive on scene, and then they turned him over to the firefighters. When these officers arrived, like I said earlier, there was no pulse, he wasn't breathing. They got a pulse back to him before the paramedics arrived, and took him to the hospital. I wanted to recognize these officers' highest standards of professionalism. They performed, their compassion, and service to their job and this community. So I'd like to come up here right now, is Officer Mullinex of the Barbanton Police Department, and Officer Tim Keys of the Springfield Township Police Department. Thank you, guys. You know, again, it's a real pleasure to be able to stand up here in front of you and recognize these officers. They do a great job every day, every shift, every hour. And when they go way above and beyond like this, that they responded immediately to that call, and they knew exactly what to do, and saved that man's life. Officer Keys, he's a valued member of our department. Quick response, steady leadership helped save a man's life from near death on that day. Thank you, Tim Keys. Officer Mullinex, although serving as an off-duty assignment at Walmart, you really stepped up. You coordinated everything, providing CPR, got the AED secured in place, saved a man's life. You guys should feel really good about that. And our community should know that we're sending that type of officer out there to serve our community every day. We are also fortunate to have some family members here that would like to say something. I talked them into saying something, so they agreed that they would say something. Do you want to sit there, do you want to stand up here?
I'll speak since my wife's not as, whatever. We just wanted to say thank you on behalf of my wife and my father-in-law, her dad. I'm not just being there, but you gentlemen are what you call heroic. You guys were there in a bat of an eye, it seemed like, and you, like this gentleman said, you all were so much in sync. And you had everything under control, it's like you were fine open machines, and I give my hands off to you guys. You were, you guys are the people that make things happen. And we wanted to come and just say we appreciate it, and acknowledge you as not, like I said, heroes, but we wanted to make sure that we said something that was positive, because you guys are not recognized for the positive stuff that you do, and this is something positive I think other people should know about.
I guess one more time, I want to remind everybody that the lifesaving actions of these individuals took courage, teamwork, and compassion. So one last time, I want to recognize Officer Keys, Officer Mullinex, for your quick action that night at Walmart. Congratulations. And they did say that he's doing better, right? You said he has a pacemaker now? Okay, defibrillator, so, oh, that's good news. Thank you. That's great, great news, thank you for coming tonight, really. The Board's going to continue with their meeting. I guess if anybody wants to step out, you're free to do that now, is that right, Mr. DeLauro?
Yes, that's right, I mean, I'm sure everyone
Thank you very much.
is here for this, for
I mean
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weinheimer.
They call me the Energizer Butter.
All right, we have a few administrative motions that we can get through here. I move to dispense with reading of the minutes and approve the minutes to date.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
I move to approve payment of bills and payroll as prepared by the Fiscal Officer, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
I move to acknowledge receipt of the Fiscal Officer's August 2025 report. Reports, of course, they are also subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
I move to approve the attached resolution entering into an agreement of cooperation between the County and Summit and Springfield Township for job creation, retention, and tax revenue sharing.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
I move to approve the quote from Chi Corporation in the amount not to exceed $3,750 for a one-year renewal for support and cloud subscription, and this will be paid from line 1,001,20,360.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
For Mr. Spickard in the Fiscal Department, I move to approve the supplemental appropriations for 2025, also known as Exhibit A, as prepared by the Fiscal Officer, and submit it to the Summit County Fiscal Office.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Spick, Mr. Cottle.
Yes, and yes.
Mr. Spickard's all in favor, yeah. I move to amend motion 207-25, the creation of the Amazon Road Maintenance Fund, to fund number 2928, and accept $150,000 to be deposited into said account.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
I move to amend motion 208-25, the creation of the Surface Water Management District Community Partnership Program Fund, to fund 2927.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
For the Fire Department, I move to approve the purchase of a Precor Stairclimber for the Springfield Township Workout Facility at a total cost of $8,287. This purchase will be paid from fund line 1,000,930,930.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
And I move to approve the purchase of a NordicTrack 2450 Commercial Treadmill and an X24 Commercial Bike Bundle for the Springfield Township Workout Facility at a total cost of $4,198. The purchase will be paid for, paid from fund line 1,000,930,930.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
So Chief, our firemen are going to be in there like Lance Armstrong, going, add on that bike. All right, so, that's good. Keep those guys in shape.
Right.
Also for the Fire, I move to amend motion 188-25 for the purchase of 10 sets of new turnout gear, coats, and pants from MES for the Springfield Township Fire Department, at a cost not to exceed $35,000. The purchase will be paid from fund line 2281,230,500.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes!
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
Okay, I'm all right, I'm gonna make it. For the Zoning Department, the Board has received a report from the Zoning Administrator regarding commercial vehicles and equipment on the property of 1841 Almater Road. Multiple notices have been given to the property owner to abate the nuisance conditions, but the owner has remained noncompliant. Is there anyone here in regards to parcel number 5110937? Sorry, excuse me. I know.
Second.
All right. Seeing no one, pursuant to Springfield Township Zoning Resolution Section 11.04 and 11.07, I move to declare the property of 1841 Almater Road, parcel number 5110937, to be in violation, and that an order be issued to the property owner to remove the commercial vehicles and equipment within seven days. Failing this, this Board shall act to move forward with legal action, and we will have it removed ourselves.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
All right, the Board has also received a report from the Zoning Administrator regarding a disabled recreational vehicle parked in the yard on the property of 2061 Oaks Drive. Multiple notices have been given to the property owner to abate the nuisance conditions, but the owner has remained noncompliant. Is there anyone here to represent 2161 Oaks Drive?
What did I say?
2161.
Okay, 2061. Anyone here from 2061? Excuse me, okay? No. I don't know what's wrong. Okay, seeing no one, pursuant to Springfield Township Zoning Resolution Section 7.01, 11.04, and 11.08, I move to declare the property of 2061 Oaks Drive, parcel number 5107635, to be in violation, and that an order be issued to the property owner to remove the motorhome within seven days. Failing this, the Board shall take, shall move forward with legal actions.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
For the Police Department, I move to approve the payment of $3,169.50 to Communications Council, Inc., for consulting services, $3,000 to be paid from fund line 2081,210,311, and $169.50 to be paid from fund line 2081,210,319.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
I move to approve the payment in the amount of $11,520 to Summit County Fiscal Officer for the second half of 2025 for the radio maintenance and operation. $6,760 will be paid from fund line 2081,210,360, and $4,760 will be paid from fund line 2111,760,790.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
I move to hire Zachary Bennett as a full-time police officer, effective October 27, 2025. This, of course, is contingent on successful completion of the required hiring procedures, and with a rate of pay per the current full-time collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
And I move to hire Chelsea Ireland as a full-time police officer, effective October 27, 2025, continuing on success, contingent on successful completion of the required hiring procedures, and with a rate of pay per the current full-time collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
And I move to accept the resignation of Officer Damiano Tison, effective 10/7/2025.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro.
Yes.
Mr. Cottle.
All right, is anyone in attendance? If anyone in attendance would like to address the Board, you may do so now.
Good afternoon, I'm Janie Carlini, West Parkway. I just want to say this has been a meeting I've been looking forward to for five or six years. The August Enviroscience Microsystem results for our lake were the best they've been in five or six years. So August 15th reading was under 3.1. August 25th sample, the four locations were all under 3. The sign with the Summit County Microsystem rating is, you know, you shouldn't recreate here if it's 8 or over. So that's really key. August came back as the driest month on record in Akron, at .19 inches of rain. To put it in perspective, in 2024, we had 6 inches and over of rain. Those numbers were averaging about 34 for the microsystems total. So, as we know, stormwater must be a real critical factor in the health of this lake. Of course, when aging systems are overwhelmed, the stormwater can contaminate and slip over into the lake. My question here tonight is, what are your thoughts about these latest readings? Where do we go from here? It really signifies that retention ponds, right, are going to be key. I just want your input, and give us some next steps, maybe.
Well, the retention ponds are going in, you said the end of November?
Hopefully, end of November, they'll break ground.
Now we're addressing the Hydrazilla. Or not.
What's that?
The Hydrazilla now we have in the lake, so we have that to worry about.
What do we think about the signs of 8 and higher? Do they need another reading before that can be removed?
There's another test being pulled probably in the next week or so. Once we get it back, then we're gonna make a determination. The trustees have asked me to take the signs down because we do have two test results that were lower today. We'll take one more test and we take the vote out.
And then we'll also confer with Lake Moore, because the last thing we want to do is leave- put our signs down and they leave theirs up. So we should at least be on the same page. So we're getting one more test, we'll see where we're at, see how that goes.
I think it's outstanding. I mean, I was so excited, I was looking at it, I'm like, "Man, are these numbers right?" So I actually called the lady, I'm like, "Listen, this is huge." And I said, "Can you please confirm this with me?" And yeah, she went over, and I'm like, "The second test?" I'm like, "Yeah, that is wonderful."
I think it would be key, like, we had huge rain, and we did that next test. Would it have shown, you know, how susceptible we really are to stormwater? But, you know, I'll take it. They're saying we're able to recreate again, which is awesome.
Yeah, I think a lot of the numbers are down over many, many lakes, actually. I spoke with the lady.
At Stormwater Management. Yeah. We had had that conversation.
Oh, yeah.
It will be interesting, because we just did have this heavy rain. If we're gonna pull the samples, probably in the next, you know, week, it's possible we might see something different. So maybe the timing will give us a different result, which may show something as well. So it'd be hard to tell.
If it comes back good, I say we have a placard breaking party. Yeah.
Good evening. David Dees, 1184 West Parkway. On the same subject, I've kept a running total of what's been going on with the testing, and I'm sure you guys have seen the chart, up, 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 and all of a sudden, drops down to nothing, which is really good. When we're doing the testing, whoever's doing the testing, in today's day of age, if you need a GPS, I can get a GPS. If we could spot where the test is taken, how deep the test was taken, what the temperature was of the water of the test, all those parameters, that would be, I think, beneficial to the EPA or whoever's gonna let us, or we just pull the- do we just pull the signs ourselves? Or do we?
So I am gonna do a double check on it, but the last conversation I had with EPA on those signs was, once you have two tests in a row that are lower than the recommended level, which is 8 now, yeah, 8, you can pull the signs. It's kind of interesting to me, because if we never do another test, I never have to put them back up.
Right.
The reason we started testing, and this is going back with the former administrator, you know, what he said, the reason they started it, is that it was recommended because we had beaches on our lake. It's the only reason we started testing, which we don't have beaches.
Right.
But, I mean, I guess it's good to know where your lake is health-wise, but that's the real reason it ever started.
Well.
So I don't know if we- the question would be, if once we take the signs down, what do we think we want to do in the future?
That's all great, I don't know if you're gonna test anymore or not, or just let it just-
I don't know, I- that's a question for a lot of entities.
I don't know, I just hoping that the test can be more accurate on the spot that we were taking the test, and, you know, so that we have our ducks in a row whenever they say, "Yeah, go ahead and move that, you know, remove those signs," that, you know, it's all, you know.
Yeah, unfortunately, uh-
Nobody can come back and say, "Well, wait a minute."
Lake Moore's pulling the samples for us.
All I'm saying is, is if somebody comes-
I don't know where they pulled the samples from, I don't- Yeah, so.
I know one time it's spot 1, 2, 3, 4, the next time it's east, west, north, south, you know, is that the same? I don't know. Is- all I'm saying is, is when someone looks at that, they're gonna say, "Well, you're not consistent with your testing, none of this is any good, you're gonna have to retest." That's all, that's all I'm saying about the testing. I'm very happy that it's in testing, and it sounds like we're gonna move forward with some, maybe some groundwater capture. Also, you moved Amendment 2825 Surface Water Management District Partnership Program Fund to a different line. Is that Summit County's that we're paying their tax to?
Oh, yeah, the surface-
I mean, we just approved it, I guess I can't even talk about it.
No, I believe.
So, well, we had to amend the previous motion, and I'm not- might be able to speak to the fund lines. We approved this before, but the fund lines, I think, that were set up-
What did we approve?
Huh? To be able to collect our money from the-
Yeah, to be in that partnership. Yeah, if you notice on your tax, there's that, and that's some of the money that comes back into the township.
Okay, so this money is for the testing?
This money is for surface water management, and it'll be based on future projects that we may be able to determine that fit within the criteria of how we can spend the money. Can't be used in road right-ofways. It could be built to build more retention ponds somewhere. The first batch of this money, as you know, if you think backwards over a year, we actually did a motion and had asked for Summit County to front-load us with money to buy the property in Akron. This first batch of money, I will be filling out documentation, it will arrive, it will go into this fund, and it- I will then use that documentation to move that money from this fund to the general fund, because the general fund paid for that property. So that is how that money can be used. In the future, if we want to do something to that property with more stormwater features and green features, to clean the water before it gets to here, we could utilize this fund for it. That's an example.
Thank you. What else did I have? Oh. Okay, so now I'm gonna talk about another tax and/or inspection fee and/or, it's a self-inspection fee that I'm sure, I don't know if everybody got it, or if you're just on a different cycle. I've been trying to find out how many septic systems are in Summit County, which is a tough call. But what I did find out was out of this, out of that fund that you send in the $30 to, it just got raised, there's $3.75 million. This is a self-inspection, okay, that you're supposed to have every time you, you know, comes, if anybody here has a septic system, lives in Summit County, you know you pay this money. Do you go out and inspect your septic system?
I have to have- hire a subcontractor to come in that is certified-
Nowhere on this thing does it-
At least the documents that I get at home, I pay the same fee.
Right.
I have to hire a subcontractor, certify, buy Summit County Health Department to fill out the forms for me and turn them in as I pay my fee.
Right. So then I ask Summit County, out of the number that we don't know, that went out there and did this self-inspection, how many of them didn't pass? Big zero.
I like that, because mine passes every time.
Well, yeah, mine passes every time, too. So does everybody else's passes every time. So what I'm asking, what I'm asking is that-
Do you still have a subcontractor? I'm just curious.
I do not. I do hire a subcontractor to help my system.
Yeah, but do you hire a subcontractor to inspect your system?
I do not.
That's interesting, because I have to hire somebody.
I do not.
I have to hire a certified person. So you're telling me you can just send in a check, and it's good as far as they're concerned?
Been doing it for 10 years.
That's interesting. That's new to me.
Really?
I always- I've had my- I have had mine inspected.
Yeah, I mean, from what I know, the county comes-
There's a- there's a-
No, the county, I have to get a subcontractor.
Town and country or whatever comes up.
You look at the form, there is a spot where you can say self-inspector.
I don't do that, I just hire somebody.
Okay, well.
I don't mind spending-
How often do you check your septic pumps?
I don't, I live on the lake, and it probably wouldn't pass because it goes right to the lake, so.
They do check ours when we have it pumped every two years.
Well, none of them fail.
So I guess, let me ask you, where are you headed with this?
Yeah, what are you-
Where are you headed with this? Because it's a Summit County thing.
Where I'm headed for this is, I hope that one of the trustees would grab a hold of this by the horn and say, "Okay, this is an illegal tax, text, tax." If there's no one failing this inspection, what good is it?
Well, do you imagine that they, if it is failing, they have an inspection?
So this is an extra $30 or $3.75 million that Summit County gets, and there's no-
Oversight, is what you're saying.
Right, there's no oversight.
That was all in two, like, last year, there was zero?
This is, since it started.
I've had one that failed.
You've had it inspected because you buy a property, now those, okay. I'm not talking about those where you transfer property. Where you transfer property, Summit County sends a guy out, it gets inspected, passes or fails. Not talking about that inspection. Talking about the one that comes in the mail and says, "Hey, send us $30."
Sounds like it's all they want is a check. I get the same thing, and I always just, "There you go," and then it's okay.
There you go, you don't call, you don't call anybody.
Yeah.
To be devil's advocate, though, you would think none would fail, because I agree that there's probably a lot of people that's gonna check that and not really. But if, if I check it myself and it's failing, I have someone fix it, when I turn in my permit, it didn't fail, because it's fixed now, you know what I mean? When I turn in that money.
Well, if, if I saw a backho- If I saw a bunch of backhoes on the road, I would agree with you.
Right.
You know, and if I, and if I saw a bunch of people fixing their septic systems, I'd say, you know, "You're right."
But I guess, listen, are you gonna check, "No, it failed," and still pay them $30? You know what? I mean, that's what I'm saying, so I can see that it would be zero, but, but I also-
I hear what you're saying.
And I agree with you, there's probably a lot of them failing.
I wouldn't mind somebody that has some plout, you know, would check into that for me. Now, the last thing I got, back to you. What do I gotta do, what do you gotta do to get a road fixed?
As it comes up on the list, actually, I was looking after we passed you on the bike the other day.
Yeah.
Your road will be coming up in the next couple of years.
Well, I'm not really concerned, I am concerned about my road, I'd love to have my road redone.
No.
But, Canfield Road, this park here that we have out there is a-
Canfield is actually, because we're gonna be doing the hike and bike path, that's what we were out there for, we were taking some measurements, getting it to the engineer. We're hoping by this time next year, the hike and bike path will be extended to the end of Canfield Road. As a part of that, we're gonna move the road a little bit north, so we gotta float it a little bit north to fit it in. And when it's done, I'm gonna, so at the end of '26, we expect the trail in, probably in '27, we'll redo Canfield Road, so that they-
'27 is Canfield Road?
Yeah. Because '26 is gonna take to get the trail in, get all that work done, and then we'll be doing Canfield Road from Kubler all the way to, uh, east.
So Springfield Township is doing the road extension, or the road repair?
That's part of a grant. So the-
My question was, is Springfield Township doing it, or are we paying somebody?
We have to, it's because it's a grant, we'll be paying somebody to do it.
So we're paying-
For the hike and bike trail and working together on the widening of the road, yes.
Okay.
The road repair will come out of the road maintenance budget from the levies that were passed.
So if, if, so if I'm reading you right, 2027 will be Canfield Road getting resurfaced. Now let's talk about West Parkway.
It probably will get done at the same time, because I like to do, because your road is back in there, doing west and east Parkway, shortway those, my goal would be to do all those at the same time. I could work in a couple of odd ones in the back, and then Canfield afterwards, so we're not driving all those roads with heavy trucks.
Cool. The roads you did over here, they look awesome.
We'll be doing something similar.
That, those are real nice now, those are, hopefully, there's not more speeding, but-
It will be. That is, so-
That's the bad part.
So that is gonna be something that I'll bring to the Board next year, as we do that down there, and we do the roads, we know that's gonna happen. We have to look into it, but I think we might want to take Canfield Road, make it part of a park district, to where we can truly put a 15 mile an hour speed limit on it, and keep the speed-
And maybe a crosswalk or two to where-
Yes.
It's visible.
Yes.
You know what I mean? And in that same line of thinking, the, I think there's six, you used to know this, but, um-
The lights.
Yes.
Working on it, I've already, I actually made some calls, well, wait, I was told to wait, because there's something changing with the lighting that Edison is gonna be doing. I don't know the proper term, so I'm not gonna try to explain it, other than, I'm better to wait, and we would get LED. If I don't wait, we would have to pay for LED.
Oh, I got you.
So it's kind of a wait, so I'm in this waiting game to do that update.
Well, I was thinking that maybe you could, what I was thinking to get to speed it up was maybe you could get a hold of their, um, I don't know, what that person is, their person that makes them look good?
Yeah, well, their outreach, that's who I've been speaking with.
And if you had an article in the paper, something saying, "Look what we did for, you know," because really, Ohio, or not Ohio, First Energy really hasn't looked good lately in the paper. This might be something that they might jump on and say, "Man, look at this project we did for Springfield, it really makes it look good," and makes them look good, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of quick points of information. Ken, you told me next year in 2026, Taylor Avenue-
Yes. Eric and I have been talking about it, we have a lot of work, we know, we debated on doing some more later this season, but probably not gonna be able to, so early next season, we plan on coming in, fixing some of those driveways we have to work on ahead of time, and yes, Taylor will be on the list next year.
Use it, Mike. Last point of information. The numbers about this lake, we're in the midst of a drought, you have no rain to runoff. Wouldn't it be logical, the most rain, oh for God, returns, the numbers will increase? We have a runoff now.
It's gonna be arrested.
So if we take your signs down early, and the rains would have to return, won't your numbers blow up?
Possible. We'll find out next week.
Well, even a week might not be long enough, right? I mean, the rain, there's no rain, you have, there's no rain in-
I know, I don't know.
I just, it was logical, the numbers are down, but the rain is down.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Do any of my come? What, oh, Mrs. Davis?
How is your son, Mrs. Davis?
Pardon?
How's your son?
I can't hear you.
How is your boy?
He's doing better. He's, um, he's got a long way to go, but he's, he's doing better.
Good.
And I just thank God he's alive.
I know.
Hi. I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but on Sanitarium Road on the east side, right at the intersection of Canton Road, kinda like on the corner, right at Dollar General, there is a, I'll call it a storm basin, it's in the road, and it is really bad. And a lot of cars have the low-profile tires, which mine is one. And I'll tell you what, you can blow out a tire and bust a rim real fast on that. I have talked to the Summit County Engineers' Office, because it should be theirs, and I know it's theirs. And I have called Sam Ross repeatedly. I've been calling him since April or May. He keeps telling me that they're gonna do something, they're gonna bid it out, it was gonna be in a bid package. He assured me it would be fixed by August, in August. I've been calling him since April or May, and it is not fixed. August has came and gone, September's gone, now we're into October, and still nothing August has came and gone, September's gone, now we're into October, and still nothing has been done. And I think that the trustees need, need to get involved in this because this is a hazard. And people on Sanitarium Road will swerve over when they see it, and it, it's a bad situation.
Is it like the grate and stuff, or the road, or, I mean, what is?
I'm actually aware of it, and I've actually reported it to the county as well. And they did tell me that it was in a bid package to be repaired.
Okay.
The thing is, is I know that we have a couple of contractors.
Yeah, I, I've seen it, I almost hit it.
Yeah.
So, so I know they are very aware of it, I know that some of the contracts that they had this year are well behind. In fact, it may affect our road program, uh, that one of the new contractors may not finish what they started this year, and will have to finish it next year. Uh, our concrete allotment is running a little bit behind, they're going to finish it, so next week, all their contracts are running behind for some reason. Don't know why, considering the weather has been so good this year, there's really no excuse considering we haven't had rain. But I, I can check into it, they told me the same thing, I've called on it.
Go ahead and call Sam, if you will, and see.
Called it repeatedly, and then it makes me mad because Sam's got to the point, he won't call me back. And that really fries me. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, I know check, I know testing the lake is always expensive and stuff, but as far as I'm concerned, with the amount of money that they're taking out of this township on this storm water management program that we had no say in, which is so wrong, I think they ought to pay to have it tested. I think they're the ones that should test it. And if our lake overflows, it goes into Lake More, and then it becomes the county's problem also. So, I just wanted to let people know, and I was totally against that storm water. You know, they had talked about it for a couple of years and said it was going to be like four dollars a lot per month, and people didn't want it. People would say, I've heard so many people say, please, don't ever vote for that because they left it up to the townships to decide if you wanted to, to do it or not. None of the townships except Bath did it. And then all of a sudden, because none of the townships agreed to go with it, the commissioners, the county commissioners voted on it and just put it on you, and you had no say in it. And that's that extra little thing that's on your tax bill for storm water management, and I think it's wrong. It was a, it's a tax, I don't care what they say, it's a tax, it's put on you, and I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
What is she saying that hang on?
Anyone else?
Catch basis. Catch basis, okay.
No? I, either of my colleagues have anything?
Uh, tomorrow is our Fall Festival from four to eight at the. We have hayrides, trick-or-treat. And Sunday is our Police K-9 fundraiser at the Iron Grill. Starts at noon during the Steelers game and Browns. Baskets, the dogs are coming.
Dogs will be there, there's about fifteen little baskets. It's a buffet, twenty hours buffet, and people should know that that's how we fundraiser our K-9 program with all the donations. This is one opportunity people can continue to keep our K-9, we have currently two K-9s because the general community, they have one on night shift and day shift. Both can reach out, both can work, we can reach out. So, if you have time, you can see us on Sunday at the Iron Grill from noon to four.
Rex needs a K-9 vest, we gotta, we gotta raise the money for that.
Our second K-9, it's about fourteen hundred dollars for a vest for him. So, we're trying to raise ones now for, that's kind of our priority, that moved to the top of the list, he gives a vest for Rex. Where is the nap? What's that? Where's the trust fund at?
Uh, down here in the Gankons.
Yeah, right, we have, we have, I'm just.
Well, they're not going to like to hear that. You didn't know where they were. Mr. Cottle, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things.
Oh, all right.
First off, Chief Simone, I'm, I'm really liking the pink badges for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I mean, that, I mean, breast cancer is affected, you know, in my life, and I think those, that's really cool. And, uh.
Actually, Officer Keys, his idea to do that, he organized everything, everything together. The officer chiefs are uniform allowances, pay for their feet pads, for the awareness for the whole month.
So, that's pretty cool. And now, listen, guys, for the grand finale of the meeting here, the Spectrum Community Channel ten twenty-three. Let me just put down my glasses a little bit here. Springfield and Lake More Community Channel ten twenty-three is proud to serve our communities by providing access to local government meetings, programming, and information of community events. We're currently running special programs, turn in to Spectrum Channel ten twenty-three for recent programming. To view the current program schedule, go to the channel's Facebook page or go to online to SpringfieldTownship.us. Thank you to Kelly, Joe, myself, and, uh, Mike for, for the help in giving these announcements and promoting the community channel. Thank you, Frank, Jim, Douglas, and Carolyn. All right, so we've got some coming attractions. The Thirty-Eighth Springfield High School Fifty-Plus Reunion. That's pretty cool, listen, guys, I got to meet these guys the other day, and, uh, it was, it was pretty neat, yeah. There was a lot of them, I loved it, I loved it. All right, and the Probate One-O-One with Steve Elliott's coming up, and they told me a little bit about it. So, if you guys, if, when you guys die, if you guys want to say where your money is going to, you guys need to take, uh, the Steve Elliott Probate One-O-One class, you don't want to go through the probate system, that's what he told me. So, Springfield Local School Board of Education, the Portage Lakes Career Center Board of Education, the Springfield Township regular scheduled meeting.
All right, all right. Some of us aren't far off from that fifty-plus. You are right, so. Anything else? Nothing, nothing from the peanut gallery over there? No? All right, good. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. DeLauro?
Yes.
Mr. Cottle?
Yes.